We want to call this meeting to order. This is the, oh geez, I left my glasses up there.
I can't believe it.
It's October?
No, this is the December 3rd, Tuesday, December 3rd, meeting of the Weber County Commission, 10 o'clock this day. I'm Commissioner Scott Jenkins. To my left is Commissioner Gage Foreman. To my right is Commissioner Jim Harvey. We welcome you all here today. Our invocation today will be given by Bill Ross. Our pledge of allegiance will be given by Brandon Roundy. And our thought of the day will be given by Commissioner Harvey. So, Mr. Ross, thank you for coming.
Our dear heavenly Father, as we come before this commission meeting, we come with gratitude in our hearts for this wonderful country and state and county which we have an opportunity to live in. We are grateful for those elected officials and leaders that lead and guide us and work every day on behalf of us as citizens. And pray that Thou might sustain and bless them and bless their families for their efforts, their time, and their way serving for our needs. We're grateful also for our military and armed forces and those first responders. And ask Thee to bless them also, that they may be safe as they service in their duties, especially as they're away from their families much during this holiday season, that Thou might bless their families with those things that they stand in need of. We need our grateful for them. We're thankful to be here at this commission meeting and pray that Thy blessings will be here, that Thou might be pleased with the efforts of all those who are going to work for each other here in the county. And we love Thee and we're grateful for these things. And we say the things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please say a pledge of allegiance along with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey, you're up.
Thursday morning, like all in the room, as folk, I was surprised by the amount of snowfall we had. And sat there and thought, wow, that looks heavy. And it was. It looks deep. And it was. It looked plentiful. And it was. And I thought to myself, wow, how grateful I am to have a day off of Thanksgiving, to be able to work on this. And then I thought later on, several hours later, after we had shoveled and shoveled more and shoveled more, I was thankful for the other neighbors in our neighborhood who were going over and helping the widow across the street, the elderly couple next door, the single mother over the next house down. It was just an army of us all together, kind of taking it one by one by one. And pretty soon another guy showed up with a tractor. And the stuff we could, just physically couldn't lift because it was the size of a car, he came and cleaned up the rest. Then I thought, got inside and I thought, boy, it's nice to have a warm fire there and it's nice to be able to have water to drink. Just, I just hit a little lever and the water's clean and don't have to boil it. Later on that day, I thought, well, when we're in the restroom, I don't have to worry about that anymore because I hit a chrome lever and that's all taken care of. And I thought about being around family and just all the wonderful things we enjoy today that 100 years ago, or two, or 900 years ago, or 1,000 years ago, they didn't get to enjoy the same thing. My wife and I recently saw a picture of 25th and Washington where a team of men were loading with shovels, snow from the street onto a wagon. And then the team of horses would haul the wagon full of snow away to dump it. And then another wagon would pull up and they'd pile more snow. And I just thought, how grateful, when you talk about Thanksgiving, how grateful I am to live in the time that we are and to enjoy so much, to have great friends and great I had a cousin the day before, on his 40th birthday, had three stents installed in his heart. Those were, that was an unexpected visit to the hospital, but he surely wouldn't be here if we weren't in today's age. I just thought, how grateful I am that we live in a day where we have so much. We have great friends. We have better health than we've ever had. We enjoy a lot of great things. Just, Commissioners, a lot of things to be, a lot of things we have, and I hope that most, Stacy, I appreciate her so much in the office and our folks there. She gave some thoughts today, but I kind of obviously am out of my own mind here. But one of the thoughts right by Zig Ziglar is gratitude is the healthiest of all human emotions. And I can tell you, the older I get, for me, I hope with the softer I become. You know, when you're younger, you're kind of a little more puffed up and a little tougher and, boy, I'll tell you, I sure like how soft feels. So those are my thoughts today, Commissioners.
Wonderful thought. Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate it. All right, we're to item D, which is public comment. For those who are here for the public to comment today, please step forward. We'd love to hear from you. All right. Sylvia is sitting here all this time, and once in a while you get up.
Sylvia Saltbury, I live in 14th Street in Ogden. I'm a widow who was a beneficiary of a kind neighbor also, who came over with his big snow blower and cleaned off my place. And I've reflected a lot too about the gratitude that I have. And one thing I'm grateful for is to live here. I think this is a wonderful place to live. You know, you hear about other, other parts of the country and the problems they're having. And I'm so thankful for those in government here who help us so much, for you and for those who work with you.
Thank you. You know, we love it, Sylvia, that you attend our meeting here regularly and that you get up and talk to us occasionally, and it makes us feel really good. Thank you. All right, we'll go to the consent items on our agenda. First item is approval of the warrants, 2227 through 2241, and 445359 through 445482, in the amount of $1,228,449. Request for purchase orders in the amount of $202,537. Request for approval, set a public hearing on December 10th to consider potential projects for which funding may be applied for under the CDBG grant for 2020. And request for approval of quick claim B, transferring parcel 090750176 and 090750177 to Hooper City. Ricky, do you want your glasses back?
No.
To read this?
Okay, thank you. Sometime today would be great.
Okay.
We issued 13 purchase orders this week for $203,000. Two-thirds of that amount, or $130,000, is for the jail. That will purchase some gates, new fingerprint machines, a camera system, and some computers. 12% or $24,000 is for the animal shelter, and that will go towards replacing their roof. 11% or $23,000 is for the IT department, and that will go to server equipment and a laptop. As far as checks, we issued 139 checks this week for $1.2 million. 63% of that amount, or $780,000, is for employee and retiree health insurance. 7% or $89,000 is corridor preservation funds to go towards purchasing land for Skyline Drive and Pleasant View. And then 6% or $74,000 for the jail, and that paid for food, utilities, and medical supplies.
All right, thanks, Ricky. Questions, Commissioners, either of you? We reviewed these, and I didn't see any issues either, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If I make a motion that we approve the consent items, F like Foxtrot, 1 through 4, including 1 through 4 today.
All right, that's motion?
Second.
And a second. All fair to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. They're approved unanimously. Okay, item G, presentation and request for approval of Visit Ogden 2020 market plan for Mrs. Sarah Tolliver. Sarah?
Good morning.
You do a really good job over there. We want you to know that.
Well, thank you. It's a nice way to start.
We're very pleased. Well, you had a big year this year, a lot of big events. And not only did we notice it, but a lot of other people noticed it. And you had a lot of accolades this year. Anyway, we appreciate you and all you do.
I appreciate that very much. We're going to review a few of those now. As part of the contract that Visit Ogden has with the county, we present our annual plan and our following year strategic plan to you for approval for our contract, as I mentioned. So again, thank you for having me, and this is the second time Commissioner Jenkins has heard this, so thank you for your patience as well. As I mentioned, we do a brief recap, so I have a video, a highlight video from this year that I'm going to start off with.
In the classic 1989 film, Field of Dreams, a young Kevin Costner is haunted by a whispered phrase. If you build it, they will come. A similar phrase has driven Visit Ogden over the last several years as we work to implement the visionary five and 10-year strategic plans laid out by our organization's leadership, staff, board of trustees, and community partners. If you build it, they will come. If you build it, they will come. Two decades ago, Ogden, Utah was as bypassed as the character rate in Salus fictional Iowa cornfields. To call it a destination was absurd, but a collective of passionate community members believed in the power of transformation and in that phrase. If you build it, they will come.
I'm getting that.
In spite of crippling economic recession a decade ago, in spite of unpredictable government shutdowns in subsequent years, in spite of critics, Visit Ogden and key community partners have forged ahead with audacious destination development initiatives. The result? Tourism-generated tax revenue continues to increase, coming in at over $9.2 million last year, according to the Kamgager Policy Institute. Every key performance indicator for tourism, recreation, culture, and conventions continues to increase. Hotel occupancy rates, average daily rates, and revenue per available room, all trending upward. Visit Ogden's marketing messages are now exposed to tens of millions of potential visitors each year. Positive press coverage as a result of Visit Ogden's efforts is at an all-time high. Importantly, our ability to track that exposure, refine our story, and move visitors through the travel cycle now rivals that at even major destinations. Out-of-state ski visits continue to increase, and Snow Basin's adoption of the Epic Pass and Powder Mountain's unique approach to providing an unparalleled ski experience promised to launch those numbers to never-before-seen levels. Special events like 2019's Heritage Festival brought over 100,000 visitors to our community, many of which we are targeting with strategic marketing to plan return visits. And while that particularly unique event will likely not return for another 50 years, other major events are already lining up. After its successful race at Snow Basin in 2019, Spartan has signed on to bring tens of thousands of athletes to Weber County over the next three years. After another successful Pan American Championship, Exterra will return to Ogden again next year for its 17th year in our community. Ogden Restaurant Week continues to show year-over-year growth and shows no signs of slowing. Uniquely Ogden events such as the Twilight Concert Series, Pioneer Days, the Ogden Friends of Acoustic Music Festival, the Ogden Marathon, and the Harvest Moon Celebration all continue to see increases in out-of-state attendees. We have built it, they are coming. Visit Ogden now finds itself transitioning out of its strategic efforts at raising destination awareness and into a new phase of true destination management. While some of our colleagues are beginning to grapple with the new term over-tourism and some forecasters in the travel and tourism industry are born in an overall slowing, Visit Ogden finds itself in the enviable position of being able to strategically plan for a sustainable tourism economy rather than having to react. That strategic planning will require abundant transparency and community buy-in. As a result, Visit Ogden will begin to increase its local outreach and community profile. Our prior focus has primarily been on communicating the attributes of our destination's potential out-of-state visitors, meaning many locals have been unaware of our efforts on their behalf. The benefits of those efforts include driving nearly 10% of Weber County's economy and generating nearly $280 million in visitor spending and $9.2 million in local tax revenue, resulting in a savings of nearly $1,300 per household. In addition to making locals aware of these tangible benefits, expect to see and hear more from us as we work together in our community to manage visitor flow, experience, and impact. To the individuals and organizations that have been longtime partners of Visit Ogden, we express our deepest gratitude and our renewed commitment to your success. To those community members who may be joining us moving forward, we hope you never forget that all of the things we love about this place are the result of passionate people who at some point decided to visit Ogden.
So the video hits on most of these notable accomplishments, but there's a few that I think are worth highlighting again. In the last available reporting period, visitors spent $278.6 million in our community, generating more than $9.2 million in local tax revenue, which is a 4.3% increase year-over-year. Our marketing strategies are becoming increasingly effective, as we talked about. We had a 41% increase in our web traffic and a 72,000% increase in our blog traffic due to more concentrated efforts there. We also were successful in securing three fully funded co-ops from the Utah Office of Tourism totaling $272,000 to add to our marketing budget. Our sales team continues to secure economically impactful meetings, conventions, and events while we service 28 groups ranging from 30 to 9,500 people each. Significant events in addition to just our normal day-to-day things we work to accomplish, we moved into a new office space that we built out this year. We welcomed 100,000 people to our community for the sesquicentennial and supported the logistics and pressed for the building of the, building two homes for the families in our community in just under two weeks. The evidence of these results is evidenced in the tourism tax revenues that we talked about, you can see growing year-over-year, and in our lodging metrics, including occupancy, average daily rates, and revenue per available room. These have been, as you can see, increasing year-over-year, even with the addition of 569 short-term rental units, 135 of which came online in the last year. Together, these units with our hotel lodging properties generated more than $34.5 million year-to-date in revenue. Our call to action for all of our campaigns is our website. As we grow our budget and our targeting capabilities, we continue to see an increase in new visitors as well as sessions. And you can see that big bump the sesquicentennial gave us this year, so we've got a lot of work to do to keep it up next year. We support many, many amazing events produced by members of our community or that we recruit here to our community and our destination. The events that we produce also fulfill a very designated need. Yeti Bash and Sweaty Yeti were designed to highlight our winter product and our après-ski scene. They are entering their fifth and fourth years respectively this year, and we are now turning them over to other very highly capable organizations with our community to continue their production. The downtown Ogden restaurants contract with us to support the logistic and marketing needs for Ogden Restaurant Week. Since taking on this responsibility, restaurant tax collection has increased by 12% during the month of the event. This event continues to grow in popularity with our community eagerly anticipating the release of menus, resulting in a 19% increase in meals served, according to the restaurants that reported back. And of course, the sesquicentennial and Heritage Festival. Enough has probably been said about this event, but I am pretty sure enough could never be said to fully express the additional efforts it took for this community to produce and support this event. However, I do still feel really strongly about the fact that the community pride and camaraderie between organizations that came from this experience will have a very long-lasting impact on this community. And then the events that we recruit. We've talked a lot about, this is part of what our measurables are with the county, the events and meetings that we bring into the community. And it's been a growing challenge to, we've had a lot of success with events that do leave a big footprint, especially on some of our residents in the Upper Ogden Valley. So we've moved away from those events that take up roads as much as we can and have instead focused on those that still have a significant economic impact but are off and hopefully only impacting our residents in a positive way. Spartan is one of those that we're very proud of. After being hosted by Nordic Valley for three years, they moved to Snow Basin in 2019 and just signed a contract for an additional three years at Snow Basin. And this event brings over 9,000 athletes to our community each year. I mentioned Extreme Home Makeover a second ago, but just what an amazing example of how a community and its stakeholders can come together to make something amazing happen, in this case for two very deserving families. And our Holy Grail, the TCG Worldwide Review, this year sesquicentennial themed and all. Our foreign dignitaries once again loved the social events that we produced with the Ogden Echols Conference Center team and got an amazing hat to take home with them as a commemorative keepsake. But, you know, not only is it a fun event for them, but the amount of business that's conducted and ensuing success for these companies ensures their repeat visit and our success each year. We continue to garner some great media coverage, as mentioned. We had more than 273 million impressions this year, which is a 71.6% increase over last year, again with a lot of those coming from the sesquicentennial coverage. And community partnerships, you know, we have some very key wonderful partnerships with community organizations, including the Gold Foundation, the Ogden Downtown Alliance, Weber County Culture Parks and Rec Team, and the Ogden City Special Events Team. But we further partnered with the Ogden Valley Business Association this year to provide a targeted content strategy marketing plan for them. We took their relatively minimal marketing budget and combined it with our efforts to increase results awareness and visitation to their community. And as we look forward to 2020, as we stated in the video, we have many goals and objectives that we will be working towards accomplishing. You each received a printed copy of our annual report as well, which highlights and outlines each of those goals and objectives. And then in our office, we also have numerous tactical level assignments attached to each one of those that members of our team will be working on. However, the overarching goal for us in 2020 is to work to further define and refine a sustainable tourism master plan. This sustainability initiative to us looks like the efforts to start work, to develop a plan to increase the tax dollars coming into our community while also responsibly preserving what drew those visitors here in the first place. This effort will guide us in everything that we do. And as such, we presented, I know you can't read that, but a cohesive targeted campaign strategy to our community partners and the state, which resulted in that $272,000 in matching funds I just mentioned. We've segmented our ski strategy into three different target groups, Powder Mountain, Snow Basin, and urban messaging, to tell the unique stories of each, hoping that we wind up with another incredible snow year. When I presented this in my annual meeting last week, there wasn't a drop of snow on the ground. And since Mother Nature has decided, as you mentioned, Commissioner Harvey, to bless us with a great start to the ski season, so we hope she keeps it up. And then, you know, whether it's for a ski vacation, or a business meeting, or some other motivation, the impact of travel is what allows DMOs like Visit Ogden to create opportunity, economic, cultural, and personal. We work really hard to tell our community's story, defend our brand, and drive investment and opportunity into our neighborhoods. We work to improve the lives of our families, our neighbors, and our community. One way we will be telling our community's story is through our Live Like a Tourist, Explore Like a Local campaign, in which we will tell the stories of creatives, adventurers, and entrepreneurs, and how they've made a life here in our community, while in the process encouraging locals to take advantage of the continually growing recreational assets, adventure opportunities, and amazing business community, as well as encouraging our visitors to appreciate and respect these same amenities with the values of a local. This spring, it will be announced that we will be the first Utah mountain town supporting the Pledge for the Wild initiative. We'll be joining Bend, Flagstaff, Lake Tahoe, Bozeman, and Steamboat Springs. While this program is still in its infancy, our partnership with this group will provide an educational opportunity for our visitors and guests while hopefully also raising some money to support our trails organizations like Weber Pathways. While our marketing and sales activities will never cease, we will continue to shift resources into management efforts to balance the interests and benefits of tourism with those of the local community that we serve. We have to compete with every other community in the world for our share of the world's attention, customers, and investment. We are responsible for promoting our community as an attractive travel destination to make the world aware, have a positive impression, and want to experience our community and meet its residents. Addressing this need for destination promotion and management is for the benefit and well-being of every person in our community. It is for the common good, and it is an essential investment to develop opportunities and build the quality of life that each of our residents deserve. As such, this is the statement that will guide what we do this year, and I opened up the annual report with this. If you build a place people want to visit, you build a place where people want to live. If you build a place where people want to live, you build a place where people want to work. If you build a place where people want to work, you build a place where business has to be. And if you build a place where business has to be, you'll build a place where people have to visit. And I think this just really effectively demonstrates the circle of visitation, residence, quality of life, and economic development, and how important each one is to the whole process. So I just want to thank you for your time, your commitment to our organization, your support. You know, we have an incredibly vibrant, wonderful community and a very exciting future that we are thrilled to be a part of, so thank you. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Harvey, go ahead.
Once again, Sarah, you and your team have done a wonderful job representing us. As we go, Commissioners, to our various meetings around the state, we're often complimented because of the tourist work that our visitogden.com does and the people behind it, but not just the visitogden.com, but the, all the other things that go on. I'm convinced that the sesquicentennial celebration was successful because of the insight of our Visit Ogden team and all the other folks at the, not just the Union Station, but the Ogden Echols Conference Center, Perry's Egyptian Theater, and many other facilities that are surrounded in Weber County. We had, we basically, folks from Union Pacific said this was one of the best locations of all the places that ever done celebrations had ever gone. They're a worldwide or global company that gave us that, that gave me that acclimate personally in the rotunda of the Capitol. And it goes on and on and on. Great presentation today. Thank you very much for your leadership in our area and for what you do, Sarah.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Forre.
Thank you, Sarah. So as we were walking back from the fireworks the other night that we attended and coming down Washington Boulevard, I was with Gloria, and we looked around, she said, you know, Ogden's made it. And I think that goes a lot to... And I think that goes a lot to what you've done to make sure that Ogden's made it. It's a different town than it was a number of years ago, we all know that. If you looked at the line at Snow Basin on Friday morning, the opening, I would say that you've hit it out of the ballpark. Unfortunately, I can't say I'm entirely happy about that, but from, but from an economic development point, and I agree with you 100%, the visitors become residents at some point, even some of those from California, but they do buy homes here. So, you know, I would just say, congratulations. It's important that you understand, and in your presentation here, it's obvious you do, that economic development that we're striving to capitalize as a county is tied at the hip with what you do, and we need to work together on that. Both efforts are needed. They really have a relationship that needs to continue. So your efforts in economic development will help us, help our economic development team get to where we need to be in the future. So I very much appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
So a couple of years ago, Sarah, I was flying home from back east, and I was sitting next to some other people, and they were talking about going skiing, and they were all excited about it. And I said, so where are you folks going to go skiing? And it just got quiet. They didn't want to say anything. And I was like, what's the matter? Oh, nothing, nothing. We just, we don't tell anybody where we go. And I said, what's the big secret? I said, I actually live there. Oh, well, if you live there, then we'll tell you. We go up to Ogden skiing. They got two of the best resorts around. And they said, they got great snow, and we don't want anybody to know about it yet up there. I laughed about that, but it's too late, the secret's out. We do very well, and our ski industry is thriving, and downtown Ogden is thriving. And, you know, when I was a young kid being raised, my folks didn't like me to come into Ogden because it was, it was tough country. But it's all changed now. And that's true, Commissioner Harvey, what you said, or Gage, what you said, it's changed. It's friendly, and it's fun to be at Ogden, and it's a wonderful community, and our tourism's up, and it's a wonderful place to live. I agree with our earlier comments today from, what's her name?
Sylvia.
Sylvia. When she says it's a great place to live, it is a great place to live, and you have been a big part of that. So thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. And I will just say with the ski product, you know, I am an Ogden girl as well, grew up here and had the resorts as my backyard secret place, and I get a lot of those really fun text messages on powder days from my friends now saying, stop doing what you're doing. But, you know, there's a lot to be said for recognizing the growth that the resorts need to be, to sustain their business models, and to helping manage any of our destination attractions with visitation so that we can hopefully spread it out or minimize the negative impacts in whatever way possible. And I think the ski bus is a great example of that, so I'll just mention that. We worked really hard to get the ski bus program implemented here in Weber County. Last ski season, we serviced over 55,000 riders, which is potentially, I mean, not exactly obviously, but potentially 50,000-plus cars off the road headed up the canyon to those resorts. So we'll continue to work on those sustainability initiatives that help all of us maintain that awesome experience as we get to have in our destination.
Thank you. Very good. So the request is for us to approve the Visit Ogden 2020 marketing plan. Commissioner Harvey?
So move. Second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. All right, second item on our action items is approval, request for approval of Weber County Appointing Members to the Weed Control Board. Commissioner Forre, or, well, go Stacy first.
Stacy's going to give us the rundown.
Yeah, you're going to give us the rundown on it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I posted four board appointments to this newly created Weed Control Board. There are five, five board positions, sorry, and I received eight applications. Two of the applications are required to be farmers or ranchers whose primary source of income is derived from production agriculture. So out of the eight applications I received, I do have two that meet that requirement, Darrell Poulsen and Matt Marriott. And then you have six other applications to choose three from, and then, once you do that, then you can draw for the terms. Two will be two-year terms, and three will be four-year terms.
Commissioner Forre?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stacy did a great job of explaining it, and under state statute, I know there's been a little discussion as far as the name of this, Weed Control Boards not to be confused with any medical marijuana or any other potential products coming on the market in the near future. So this is Weed Control Board. Commissioner Harvey would like to rename that at some point in time, which he can talk to his favorite legislator, and that may happen. But right now, it is under state statute, and we know that they do things mostly right down there. It is the Weed Control Board.
We, so I need to comment there. Sorry to interrupt, but during a recent conference in the state of Utah, all the Utah Association of Counties, because of the misinterpretation and what they called it when I went to school, weed, they, which usually was like, yeah, man, we, they suggested it be vegetation management, but Weed Control Board is evidently something they've done down at the state, and so I just was trying to keep the communication path easy. You know, the state's kind of all-knowing, right? No, I didn't know that, but they're fine people, but not everything that comes out of the state. You going to finish that?
I, yeah, no, I, I've heard that before.
Anyway, sorry.
So with that, Mr. Chair, we did have the two applications that meet criteria for farmer production. Those would be Matt Marriott and Darrell Poulsen. So I would, I would move their names forward in the capacity of production that meet the provisions of state statute in that regard, and...
Why don't we stop right there? So that's a motion?
That's a motion for those two.
Second? Okay, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that fills the form requirement. Go ahead.
So we have, we had six very great applications for the remaining, well-qualified people. I would, and it's been a tough decision, but I would recommend the following people, and then we'll draw for the term length, would...
This is a motion.
This is a motion, uh-huh. I'd move to approve Kara Warner as one of the three remaining, Craig Jackson in that same capacity, and Cody Zinger.
Zesiger.
Zinger, Zinger, yeah. And he's with USU. Craig Jackson is an attorney and has some farming experience as well. Kara comes from the agricultural community and has shown that she's very interested in, so those three would be my motion, Mr. Chair, and obviously, we had three others that were also qualified, and hopefully that we, as this moves on, they'll have an opportunity to serve in some capacity.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I can, I can, I think those are three good names. As I reviewed those applications, there was a couple of others who had experience working in parks and recreation as well, but I think based on what we've seen here and their experience in the past, I'm only familiar with Ms. Warren, Kara Warren, who worked for the Bison Association for a number of years and was very, very good at volunteering there. To all of them, appreciate being willing to serve. These boards don't pay anything. They're volunteer service, and so I appreciate all applicants there and would encourage more, but I would second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioner, excuse me.
That's a resolution. I'm sorry.
G2.
G2.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Forre?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. You know, I've been here an entire year, and I think I've hit about three of these. That Fochwa has to remind me every time.
She keeps us in good shape.
I know. I apologize.
We need to also, Mr. Chair, just to remind her, I think we need to draw for...
No reminder needed.
Thank you.
This is for the, hold on. We got it.
So you could draw the first two names, and they could be the two-year positions, and then the remaining three will be the four-year positions?
So the first two will be two-year positions, the last three will be...
Four-year positions to expire in 2023.
One for you. One for you. There you go. Who are they?
This is Cody.
Kara Warren. There you go. Those are the two-year spots. Thanks, Stacy. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Need anything else, Sarah? Is that great?
Okay. Good job done. All right, item three is approval contract between Weber County and the state of Utah Property Surplus Program. Bill Ross.
This is just the application for us to continue. As you're well aware of, the, we've, the county's been participating in the federal surplus property program where we acquire used property from local government, and not even so local in the United States, where we can acquire used property and use it for use at a very discounted price. We utilize hundreds of piece equipment that we've acquired through this program, and this is just our application to continue that, to extend the tax dollar of the citizens and use of that property, so.
Very good. Questions?
Commissioners, you ready for a motion?
You know, I'm not sure I want to approve this. Let me tell you why.
Tell me why.
Well, we get those free trailers, and we buy that cheap equipment, and then the next thing you know, the sheriff comes and wants to buy, wants us to build a building to put it in. The cheapest thing we do is get the equipment. The most expensive thing we do is maintain it. No, I'm giving you a hard time.
Okay, good point. I may have to rethink that motion. Now, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Weber County and the state of Utah Property Surplus Program as presented by Mr. Bill Ross this morning.
Second. Okay. Sorry, Bill.
You're okay.
It's a little hard on you.
Quite humorous, that's good.
All right, I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved unanimously, I should say. Very good. Item four is request is a discussion, action, request for approval of Suncrest Meadows subdivision, phase two. Mr. Steve Burton, how are you today?
Good. How are you, Commissioners?
Very good, sir.
Good. Before you, there's a request for final approval of Suncrest Meadows subdivision, phase two. This is the second phase of a 47-lot subdivision located at 4700 West and 2550 South. This was approved by the Planning Commission. It was recommended for final approval on October 9th of last year, so this is the final step to be it before you. As, I do want to let you know, as this has gone through the process, there have been some property owners nearby that have had concerns with how the ditches and the irrigation lines will be maintained. It's my understanding that the property owner has agreed verbally to enter into some kind of private agreement with those property owners to make sure that their concerns are addressed. From the county's perspective, this has gotten all the approvals that it needs from the engineering department, fire, planning, surveying, and it's before you for final approval now. So this phase is nine lots.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? No, just more growth. Very good. Is there anybody in the audience that's come to talk about this or testify on this?
Developers here. Carson's here.
Yeah. I don't know, you know, sometimes you don't want to say things.
That was my thought right now.
Okay. Very good, Steve. So that looks like ready for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve, what are we talking about here? The Suncrest Meadows. Request for, move to approve the final plat on Suncrest Meadows subdivision, phase two.
Second. Hey, I have a motion, a second. Steve, we appreciate the work you do down there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved unanimously. Very good. Item five is approval of $17,150 donation of impact fees to Weber Pathways for the Wolf Creek Drive Pathway. Mr. Bill Ross.
Okay. Like I said, this is just an additional request for $17,150 to finish up that construction project from, pretty much from Wolf Creek down to that first intersection. They need to do a little bit of cleanup, excess material, of excess material, and installing some landscape restrictor fabric and riprap material, and that'll all be completed this Sean made, wanted me to note that the requested donation will come from the Upper Valley Trails Impact Fee Account, and the project is part of the approved impact fee trails plan, so...
All right, Commissioners, questions?
Just one question, if I might. So what exactly we going to do to complete that? It looked to me like it was pretty much done.
It's pretty much done. There's a few things that just need to be cleaned up, mostly cosmetically, and some of the parts that needed to be fixed and repaired, so, yeah, the funds just kind of ran out to finish the project, so this will just finish it up, so it'll be total and complete, so...
You know, I know that these are restricted funds. They're funds that are, they're contributed to, aren't they, in part by when we have races or when we have events in the valley? And so here's a direct benefit back to the Ogden Valley because there have been impacts to the valley that have had fees, and now those fees are, it's, I hate to you, but it's like that circle of life thing, which is turned without having to sing the song. So, yes. Yeah, it's perfect.
Yep. Very good. You know, Pathways had a good year with us. Not only are we giving them this money, but we included a couple hundred thousand dollars in our budget this year for them. So they do really good. They're building some good trails, and they get, every dollar they get, they match up one or two times, and so I'm excited to do this.
Right, and if you ever visit up there, they're highly used. I mean, they're, they're full of people all, all the time, so...
Active transportation.
Yep.
That's what they call it. Very good. Motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
With your permission, I'll make a motion that we approve the 17.5 out-of-impact fees to Weber Pathways for the Wolf Creek Drive Pathway completion.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. All right, next item is request for first reading of an ordinance of the county creating a special revenue district for countywide flood control and drought emergency mitigation. Mr. Scott Park.
Standing in for Sean this morning.
Too bad.
This is a first reading of an ordinance that would create a special revenue fund for countywide flood control projects. So what this will allow us to do is to carve out a specific rate from the general operations rate and dedicate it specifically for flood control, and it will allow us to build a fund balance and roll over money from year to year so we can start building and saving for some of these flood control projects. So this is just the first reading of an ordinance that will allow us to establish that fund.
Right, so this is basically storm, stormwater.
Yes.
Yeah. This is, you know, one of the things we found when we got here as Commissioners is that we've been collecting this, but we collected it under the general fund, and we felt like it was appropriate to break this out so that everybody understood where their money was going and how it was being shared, and so anyway, that's what this is doing. Questions, Commissioners?
This is great. I think that we're taking a proactive approach in addressing, as every time there's development and there's hardscape, all that stuff ends up in a place where water eventually drains out to the west, and we have to stay on top of this and continue to move forward so that we're not flooding. That's all there is to it. There's, there is an incremental increase in water flow out west than there was 20 and 50 and 100 years ago because of all the hardscape that's been added to the, to the east and the mountains. And so this is a great step forward for us to, just to do this. It's a change, so that's good.
It's not just the increase in water, it's the fact that water carries silt with it. And so if you look at the areas around major rivers, they have... And so if you look at the areas around major rivers, they have, I'm trying to think what those are called. Easies? No, it's on Nettie. When they come out into the ocean, they create a great big span of dirt or silt that it carries down the rivers. And these rivers that go through Weber County do the same thing. And if our, we have a machine that sits out in West Weber County all winter long that just cleans it out, and they clean it out year after year. You say, well, man, we cleaned this out. How can, last year, how can this be full of dirt again? Well, it carries that dirt down all year long.
And we do it in the winter because, explain that so for people who don't know.
We do it in the winter, first of all, we can get to them because the ground's frozen, and secondly is it's downtime for us, and we can do it cost-effectively then. So that's my answer to it.
I knew the answer, I just wanted people to know.
Very good, questions? Commissioner Furor?
No questions, I just think this is another good policy decision we make in terms of the budget, that we create a fund that recognizes that just what you gentlemen said, is that we need to deal with this, and especially as we grow as a county and we put more hardscape on our existing land structure, it's going to become a large issue. So it's proper, and it's good budgeting, good accounting principles that we have a fund set up to deal with this, so we're not continually taking from the general fund or trying to second guess. We'll have a specific fund to go to, to deal with this particular issue. So I think it's good policy. And I appreciate Commissioner Jenkins kind of heading this up and making sure that we reach the goal line on this. With that, Mr. Chair, I'd love to make a motion.
I'd love to have one.
To approve the first reading of an ordinance of the County Commission of Weber County creating that special revenue fund for countywide flood control projects and drought emergencies.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, passes. Thanks, Scott, we appreciate that. Next up is a resolution of the County Commission of Weber County appointing members to the Ogden Musical Theater Advisory Board. This is Cassie Bybee.
Hello. Good morning.
Good.
Morning, Cassie.
Good morning. You've been a busy lady.
We have been.
So just quickly, what have you done in the last couple of days? Even in the last 24 hours, what's happened over there?
Let's see, we've decorated 27 Christmas trees, and we've done a full musical, and changed that out, and now we are...
What does it mean to change that out?
Well, I've, we, we, last night, we took a set apart and laid Marley down and got rid of a complete musical set, and put all the floor back in and hung new flies on the lines and new lighting, and we're ready to go at 6:00 AM for Nutcracker, at 6:00 AM this morning.
So while you were sleeping, all this took place?
While we were asleep.
That's what I was thinking.
Now we get ready for the Nutcracker.
She wasn't sleeping, but we were sleeping.
Yeah, that's right. Cassie, that's wonderful.
Yeah, it was good. Yeah, it was actually a really, a really good, busy day yesterday.
People wonder what happens at our conference center and the Perry's Egyptian Theater, and now you know.
Lot going on.
We invite them to have a little more culture in their lives.
Yes. Well, see, yesterday was our first holiday party as well, our first Christmas party. We had the Weber State Alumni Party, Holiday Party there at the conference center as well. And what they did is they were in the junior ballroom, and they had a big festivity there and dinner and things, and then they all went over and saw the musical, saw Five Carols for Christmas.
Well, that's great, but he said holiday party, but that doesn't include the Christmas Tree Jubilee that Weaver School District just finished.
Yeah, exactly.
That was just a little banquet for 800 of your closest friends, but not a Christmas party, because those are different.
Yeah, there was 900 that attended there.
900, sorry.
Yeah, no, it was good. It was good, and then we, and then we had Christmas Tree Jubilee all through the weekend with Thanksgiving off.
So I just wonder, you know, I'm so grateful for the conference center because people just had a chance to decorate and to cook for Thanksgiving dinner, then clean up for 10 or 20, and that's a lot of work, but it wasn't 800 or 900 at time after time after time. Just wanted to point that out, because you do a wonderful job over there.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Yep, we have a good team. Lot of help.
Very good.
So do you want me to read the names?
Well, it's your recommendation, who we appoint.
Yes, so this is, so Taylor Canuth and Mickey Larson, they've actually both been on the board, so this is a renewal for them, all right? And then new members are Jeanette Bischoff, Jackie Hoff, Rhett Long, Pam Parkinson, and Scott Parkinson.
There you go.
Very good. Commissioners, questions?
No, that's a great, wonderful group of people with experience. That's great. So? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you'd entertain a motion?
I would.
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution appointing members to the Ogden Musical Theater Advisory Board.
I'd second that. I have a motion and a second. Foxma?
Wait.
Oh, yeah. It's Resolution Number 62.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Furor?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. It's approved.
All right, thank you.
All right, so next item is a, let's see, is approval contract between Weber County and Ogden Weber Chamber of Commerce to waive rental fees and provide meals at no cost for a recognition event with Leadership Northern Utah Youth Futures Christmas Gathering.
Yes, so let me tell you a little bit about this.
Please.
So our chef, Dave Fuentes, is currently in the program with Leadership Northern Utah. So they have, in there, they have some projects, and so he has approached us, and their idea was to invite 20 kids from the youth futures, these are high-risk youth, and they want to be able to come in and do a holiday event for them, a Christmas party, if you will. That's December 19th. And then the Leadership Northern Utah team, there's about 20 of them that are through the chamber, going through the program, the leadership program currently, they want to come in and help serve that, and, you know, help set up and then serve the meals with them, and then clean up afterwards. So if we do this, they're asking that the rent will be waived, and then we actually provide the food, and the chef will prepare it.
So we provide an experience for the...
Correct.
Underprivileged kids.
Correct.
And offset the labor by volunteers.
Correct.
And then they get, it's a fundraiser for them?
It's not a fundraiser, no, it's just actually to bring the youth in and to give them a holiday party, if you will, but also they have a speaker that they would like to come and speak on some leadership as well, so they'll have a little, they'll have a program, and it's about a two-hour event. I think they're holding it from 3:00 to 5:00 on the 19th.
Very good.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So are both of these groups associated with the chamber? I'm assuming that the Leadership Northern Utah is, and I'm not familiar with the leadership or youth futures.
No, they're not. What they, what they do, the youth, the Leadership Northern Utah, as one of their activities, they actually choose something that they want to serve. So the team of 20 that are going through the group, they chose youth futures, and this is just one of several activities that they'll do throughout the whole year of their leadership, in their learning program that they're going through with the chamber. This is just one event.
Point of, youth futures, they're not just underprivileged, they're homeless youth. Most have been kicked out of their own homes, and they're not welcome for whatever reason, so it's a, a lot of LGBT kids, it's really the folks in need there.
Yeah, they're at risk youth.
At risk.
Mm-hmm, at-risk youth.
I went and toured their facility two weeks ago. 2760 atoms.
Yeah, I've been over there.
This is just, this is just a really good way, I mean, the chamber's a good partner with Weber County, and this is a good way for us to be able to partner with them and the county to, and our facility, give back, and to also let our chef, who's going through the program, give back and have his, you know, be able to shine himself and show his skillset.
Yeah, and that's, I thought that was the group we're talking about. I actually ran some legislation for them years ago so they could create those homes, and I tell you, they do an excellent job. I know they have the facility here, and I know they have one in St. George. I don't, but this takes a lot of, you hit it right on the head, at-risk kids that until this group set up, they were out at truck stops, they were on the streets, they didn't really have a place to go because they, most of these kids weren't welcomed at home, so that's great. It's a fantastic group, and it's a group, the leadership of that organization, they do very, very good things for the community.
Well, do they do good enough that you want to make a motion to approve this?
I would be happy to, Mr. Chair, to approve the contract between Weber County and Ogden Weber Chamber of Commerce to waive rental fees and provide meals at no cost for the recognition event with Leadership Northern Utah slash Utah Youth Futures Christmas. Thank you.
Second.
Huh? Got a motion and we got a second? I'm surprised. No, I'm not. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Cassie, we appreciate you. Very good. All right, item nine is request for approval of memorandum of understanding between Weber County and Utah Highway Patrol regarding law enforcement responsibilities of Weber County. Mr. Brandon Roundy.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Today, I'm presenting this cooperative agreement between Utah Highway Patrol and the Weber County Sheriff's Office, and what it really is, is it's for them to continue or to start enforcing laws, traffic laws, and crime-related laws specific to the jurisdiction of state roads. This is already supported under the state code as their jurisdiction. All we are really doing is inviting them back in to cover the roads and have a presence in Weber County. The roads specifically that we've addressed with them are Highway 126 from the Roye border and State Road SR 79 to the Boxellar County Line, State Road 39 from 4700 West to 1200 West, SR 39 from the mouth of Ogden Canyon to the Rich County Line, and Trappers Loop Road from Snow Basin Road to SR 39. As a part of this, we've also moved them to our radio channel, and we've seen a lot of value with this. It's already been recognized by citizens and city council members and mayors of the increased presence of law enforcement in Weber County. It also provides a great resource for all the police agencies to draw from, because they'll have closer access to state resources when our deputies are out on incidents that they may not be aware that they have availability to. The whole purpose of this cooperative agreement is to kind of create some stability in our partnership with the Utah Highway Patrol, because they are going to need to increase staffing to cover these roads, and so they, if they're going to increase staffing, they want to see that this is going to be long-term. That's pretty much everything for this proposal. You have any questions?
Commissioners, questions?
This was a, something that was brought up during a luncheon that the sheriff presented at yesterday. Is there any downside to this at all, or any that you can think of? Is there any downside as far as state funding for a roads department or anything like that?
There's nothing that I have been able to locate any kind of downsides. According to the state code, that they are responsible already for those enforcement of that, and they were, we assumed responsibility several years ago, I believe it was under Sheriff Slater's office, is when we assumed responsibilities for those. At that particular time, we were running pretty heavy in law enforcement, we had approximately over 100 officers, and since then, the demands of increase in population and call volumes and that's put stresses with on, on the sheriff's office, and it's one of our strategies of bringing in cost-effective law enforcement presence that all the county will benefit from, but I have not identified any negatives as far as decrease in funds towards, from the state for the county.
Thank you, this is a win-win, and I appreciate that, really, the byproduct is more presence in our areas that are, that we should have had for quite some time since we've made the adjustment down, so I appreciate you picking up on this. He did in his presentation yesterday. Chief Roundy mentioned you and the work you've done on this, and so I know you've given a lot of credit to the sheriff, but that goes right back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much for what you've done here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you're ready, I'll be glad to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve item number nine on our agenda, which is the MOU between Weber County and the Utah Highway Patrol regarding their respective enforcement responsibility.
Second. Very good, I have a motion and a second to that. All in favor say aye.
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 Any votes? It's unanimous. Very good. Next is a cooperative agreement between Weber County and Utah, Uinta, cash, Uinta Wasatch Cash National Forest, adding $48,000 fiscal year 2020, funding available for reimbursement to Weber County. Mr. Roundy?
Commissioners, this is really just a modification to a current cooperative agreement that we have with the Forest Service. The current agreement lasts until September 2016, and what the Forest Service has done different this year than in previous years is that rather than just providing a lump sum of $48,000 for reimbursement for sheriff's office services provided to Forest Service lands, they've actually rolled over the unused funds from 2019 into the 2020 operational and financial plan. The carryover was $14,709, which increases the total to $62,709 for the fund, so this is just a modification to the current agreement that we have.
Questions, Commissioners? See none, I'm ready.
Mr. Chair, if you're ready for motion, I'd move to approve the cooperative agreement between Weber County and the Uinta Wasatch Cash National Forest, adding the additional $48,000 for FY 2020, available for reimbursement to Weber County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Chief Roundy? Very good. Well, with that, we've come to the end of our agenda. Commissioner comments. H, would either of you wish to speak up?
Want to remind people that next week, or a week from today, will be our last commission meeting for the year, as the next two Tuesdays will be the Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve respectively, and so we're getting a lot of things taken care of with our books and everything else, and although county services will still be available on those days, we just won't hold a formal meeting on those days. And so Stacy has one point of correction.
Do you have one on the 10th and the 17th?
Oh, sorry, I'm a week ahead, 10th and the 17th, I'm sorry. I'm just a week ahead. Yeah, thank you. 10th and the 17th, and what, Gates?
Yeah, so we have two more.
Two more meetings, right. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Good. Commissioner Furor, you got anything you'd like to say?
Oh, I just, since we have Cassie and Sarah here, you know, we, this last weekend was an example of what residents of Ogden City, Weber County come to expect, and in the way of events they have. We attended the parade, we went over for the fireworks, and all sorts, and the play at the Egyptian Piri was a great play, by the way, and then for those that had the proper gear on, there was a hockey game that night, so.
As well as the Santa Claus run.
And the Santa Claus, well, yeah, can't leave out the Santa Claus run, and the participation that I saw in the paper was fantastic, so anybody that thinks, and then we had skiing, of course, starting Friday at the Snow Basin, I believe Saturday, Powder Mountain opened, so anybody that's not getting out and enjoying what we have to offer here in Weber County, it's their fault. There's all sorts of activities, and a great time of year. Get out and enjoy it, and we thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. All right, I'm waiting for one more motion.